Calling meeting. We're gonna have these minutes and approve them here, Kathy and I.
Young man?
Yes, please.
Yes, you can.
Hey, that's for, that's whatever.
Excuse me.
Yeah, it's gonna be to this guy right here.
Tell me if you're going over.
I said, excuse me. He's full.
Read through a police department, he's already paid for it, or he dropped them all for us.
Okay, he's paid for it, okay.
We're just reimbursing him, check out the name.
Okay.
And in fact, they have my own, got the invoice number here. Anybody else smoking brownies, want, you got some?
No.
You want some, sir?
I'm okay with that.
I think it's.
They're warm. They just come out of the oven.
I'll sit them off this big and big bag that you sit closest to your horse and huh?
Yeah. It usually goes pretty, yeah. People go pretty fast. Must ask if people's come down and talk about speeding on South Main.
That's the one thing I hated out of living, when I'm living, like, with a fifteen mile an hour speed limit on my road. It was just because there's a, there's one side, and there's a lot of kids that play out there.
Well, for some reason, they think that, uh, that South Main, unless our track is a, is a drag strip, they have to get going as fast as they can, because they're going up the hill or something. It's not.
Did they have to take that loose from the pole to turn it upside down, didn't they?
I have to walk those.
That sign out there is turned upside down.
Which one?
Right out here, next to. There between the two buildings.
So somebody had to do it?
Which sign?
I'll have to, I'll have to, I'll have to look at it.
The Greens Fork sign? Well, how they, they had to tear some bolts or something loose to do that?
You would think, yes. Yeah, you would think.
Careful of it. I just noticed it. You want a fork, uh, Bob?
No, I don't. My fingers is good enough.
You just liked them, they're fine.
I don't know about that.
It didn't go that far.
I didn't know that, like I say, I don't know about that. Now they worse.
Okay, questions about the, uh, minutes, Kathy?
It's just the top bolts rusted off, came off, it was just.
Oh, it just went, okay.
Yeah, we, just Doug needs to put a screw in the top of it, it'll be fine.
Okay, good. My fellow street department know about that.
Let's see. So here, we got the breakaway signs in, do we know if they were, uh?
It's too cold, there's just one, but, uh, I don't think.
Are you guys too cold?
Too cold.
It may have been, but I'm not sure about it.
I have three limbs all and I'm still cold.
Did you got a good thing, go with help?
No. I did.
All right, nobody has any question of the, uh, minutes of last month's meeting, I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Do you want me to ask the question now, or afterwards on this?
Ask, Kevin.
Had you had prior stop stick, stop stick training?
Yeah, back in mine, uh, two thousand and two.
Really? Is this all been brought on because of the guy that was killed?
Yeah, Cooper, yeah, he's like the, the second one that's gotten injured in the last, you know, six months, about, well, killed actually, on improper deployment of stop sticks, so we're just gonna get, get some done, just, just as a reminder, they're, they're supposed to stay out to the side of the road, that, they're never supposed to enter the roadway, and everybody getting in a hurry, they just forgot basic stuff, so we just had to, just, just went through it again.
And before the time gets away from us, the new outlets for the Christmas lights, is that on us, or is that on Duke?
That's on Duke.
That's been working on that since March.
I have called them repeatedly, repeatedly since March.
Do they do it for free, or are we gonna be charged?
Well, they've never said, I, I think they're just gonna not do it. I don't know.
And what outside camera are we talking about?
Outside camera.
Are we talking down the?
Where yet?
Right here, tabling?
Back range, oh. No, Rick had brought up several months ago about getting, having a couple cameras that Rick could place strategically around town.
Right, that would be.
In different little neighborhoods where there was issues.
Okay.
With, with house, with people's permission, of course.
Yes, I thought he meant up around here.
Well, I mean, and that's something else too, do you think that at some point we, we should, uh, you know, put some,
Of the parking lot?
Cameras out, in the parking lot, either facing towards the garage, and then it's, well, in the garage, facing towards.
Please do.
I don't think it would be a bad idea, and it's kinda sad, in small town like this, that you would feel what you need, something like that.
Well, it's kinda just sad that.
All right.
Tearing up those stuff.
But, uh, I'm, I'll get with Doug and see what makes sense, as far as location, and.
I know we do have camera at the sewer plant, that function.
And then, at some point, we're gonna need to get a camera in here, because you're gonna have to start either live streaming this stuff, or.
We got one right there.
Nah, I don't, I don't think that's gonna count.
It's two thousand and twenty-five, effectively.
Right, but at some point, we're gonna, I mean, but before you know it, two thousand, two thousand twenty-five is gonna be here, so, and we need a mountain of cameras somewhere where can go to face, Facebook, or YouTube, or whatever the requirement is, but.
I don't know.
We're only talking a couple hundred bucks, because you've already got the internet sped up, so it's, it'd just be a, getting a nice camera that kinda zooms in and shows. So, just, just start thinking about it.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, there's a new house.
It'll be in our minutes that we were talking about that.
Didn't we sell the, uh, white police car too?
We haven't.
We haven't yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's kinda still.
I didn't think we were planning on selling the white police car, and that's something we'll have to discuss.
Yeah, I, I've been, uh, I've been trying to get my, get, get the radio situated for the, for the, for the charger, and then once that, then we can start worrying about how to get rid of that, but the, but we're still using the white car right now.
Well, we may want to amend this, because it says, "To see the old brown police car donated to Play Township Department, and old white police cars sold to offset peace Christ with the."
That's what you guys said in the last meeting.
Yeah, well, uh, it was talked about either way, either selling it or getting it to another department.
Yeah.
That could use it, and that's still open. I, we haven't moved any.
Well, that's something we'll have to discuss, personally, I, I don't know that we wanna get rid of a perfectly good, the white police car, because it's got every, it's a regular police car, got all the lights, and.
We maintain it.
We're not using it at all?
No, yeah.
That's the only thing they're driving right now.
That's all I've got then.
There's a motion to accept the minutes.
Seconding?
Motion been made, properly seconded, to accept the minutes from July thirteenth, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aze. Thank you. Appearance by citizens, we have some citizens here, we have a new, uh, town citizen, what was your name again, I'm sorry?
Charles Creeson.
Charles, let's just leave it.
Okay.
Charles Creeson?
Yes, sir.
Creeson, okay. Charles Scott and Derek, and Derringer, and Little B. Anybody, uh, any of the citizens have anything they wanna bring up?
I was thinking about, for that speeder that we've been having, it's, uh, my whole road's been having issues with, that one guy speeding, if we could put some speed bumps or something down through there to try to get him to slow down.
Does he not slow down?
He slowed down a little bit, but not much.
We have, uh, we have looked at it, in the past, we had looked at speed, we had looked at speed hump, if you remember, that we could move, actually, but they didn't work out on the north end of town, if I remember correctly. I thought Rick had talked to him, my thing is, if he comes speeding down there, call Rick.
Well, they did, and I came and said, and, I mean, obviously.
I texted you, gonna license information.
Well, but, but, I mean, but it would be nice to, if we could get either removable ones, or get the smaller rumble, the, uh, they call them rumble strips, you know, like, like when you're approaching a construction, if you go in too fast, it, uh, cause your car to shudder, you know, you're hitting things. So, I mean, and really, it's not very expensive for that, to, uh, to get that, and this has been.
Rumble strips?
This has been an ongoing issue for.
Rumble strips.
Oh, like you just said, South Main.
I mean, for me, if, uh, if we put them in a, a couple of spots on South Main, I'm along with a sign that's saying, good, but, it's twenty-five, right?
They have signs that say.
Twenty-five.
Uh, children that play, twenty-five mile an hour.
So, if you, to me, if you put some sort of, either rumble strip, or, or bump, or take some, uh, code patch and form your own, or whatever the case is, I think it, uh, it would make a big difference down there on South Main, because they're not slowing down.
You've experienced it also, Scott?
It's not just the white truck, you'll get.
Not the white truck.
Yeah, but there's other, you know, that, that just tends to be the, uh, the, the drag strip when someone crosses that track.
And I see people coming around the curb, coming towards Washington Street, and they appear to be flying, but, you know, thirty mile an hour on a street like that, appears to be moving quick.
But Rick is right, this white pickup truck, it was really going past, I would estimate at least fifty, at least.
Is it somebody from Greens Fork, or?
No, he's, he's driving for the Amish, I believe.
He always passes through while I'm home, so, I never see him.
But, but what I'm saying though, that if we can try one of those ones that, that you put in the ground, you tap in with, uh, with the rods, put them in, try that, and see if that slows them down, if not.
We should have one, unless it was discarded because it got to work, we had one, one truck, where's that?
Well, that is one of the downpits, if you go through plowing and you're not paying attention, you will definitely hit that.
That was part of it, put it down in the summer, pull it up in the winter.
Yeah, we'll be able to remove it, when it comes winter time?
I mean, that would probably be, that would be a good option, wear time, you take it out, then when springtime comes, and put it right back in again.
Well, how about the rumble strips, where they made out of?
They're like, almost like they stick to the, like they're pill and stick, or something.
You know, like, when you're getting ready to turn on a major highway, and you go over into the turn lane, and it's got that, looks like tam, and it, bruh, your car, those are rumble strips.
Those are originally, some of them were made to like, wake truck drivers up. Get the rods, and you hit those, and they.
And then you got some, some places that they, uh, got like this giant roller, that actually just goes right into the asphalt, and it makes, makes the rumble strip. You know, like for a dividing, so you don't have oncoming traffic collisions and stuff, but, but I, I know we got magazines and stuff here that's got, got the, the ones that you can temporarily put down, and then take up again.
We have a speed hump somewhere in our position that we own.
And it did work, because it slowed down the traffic in the alley, wasn't that where, was that in the alley?
But I thought I recall Doug telling us it got tore up.
It might have.
That's my question, was it tore up to the, to the point that it was discarded, or?
But it was tore up because of snowplow, hit it, never plowing snow, right?
And which house do you live in?
Uh, three twenty-one South Main, next to Mc, McIntyre.
Oh, where Varner lives?
Yes.
The bird's house.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. You're thinking right now.
Okay, Sarah?
Yeah.
So, do you want me to, uh, talk to Doug, if we don't have one, it, well, I'm sure, that was tore up, I remember.
He knows where to get them, that's my point.
I can just have him order one, and we can try it.
Well, like I say, we want something that can be moved.
Right, the one that's got the, that uses the steel pins, or to drive in the ground.
Is that a speed bump, or a speed hump?
It'd be whatever, whatever name you wanna call it.
It's more like a speed bump.
Speed bump is taller.
It's gonna be a couple inches tall, it's just enough to slow, you don't want the big tall ones where, like, you know, you don't want the ones like, like in a Walmart, where they're like five inches tall, where you have to creep over, you don't want that.
Well, it's our fault, because we've been paving those streets when they get big holes in them, if they had big holes in them, people would get used to that, it starts slowing down, so.
Or a gravel road does the same thing, I guess. All right, I'll get with Doug and see if we can, he can get one, and I guess put it in front of Darren, Derringer's house.
I'd say anywhere.
It's about middle, so.
Yeah, halfway down, yeah, that'd be great.
And then, and then we can kinda play on that, if it's still a problem, then we can kinda, kinda group up in a couple months and say, yeah, might need it more, move towards the tracks, or maybe back towards Washington Street, so I think it'd be a good, for a hundred and fifty bucks, or whatever they cost.
But you're saying South Main is the only place this happens?
That's typically where we hear all the complaints from, the South Main, water streets got curves and stop signs, I mean.
It's the longest stretch on the track, actually, it's the longest stretch.
I think it's the longest stretch in town.
It is.
I can remember back in the time, back in the seventies.
Yeah, right there, just see, come cross tracks, somebody come flying over the railroad, and hit the motorcycle, and I'll help pick it up.
Yeah, I saw it.
I can remember being, oh, everyone going in with this one.
Oh, yeah, you go crazy, kids were all up there. Anything else from citizens, appearance, appearance by citizens?
Did you wanna say something to us, sir?
Nothing.
No, okay, yes?
Hey.
What's that?
Oh, Scott Genson? Yeah, uh, is anybody gonna start taking care of that property next to mine? Those weeds look like trees.
That's the one.
Chipper deckers.
Yes.
Well, I can have the town guys go over and at least cut the grass, I guess. Because.
No one's still there.
I noticed you cut a little part up front right next to you, or Darren, or somebody.
Well, yeah, we, we cut like the front a little bit, the strip or whatever, but the, the guys that came to did my fence, or whatever, went through there and cleared out there on the side, so they could stand and stuff, because I needed to get my fence stained and everything, but, I mean, that, those, those aren't trees, those, those are weeds.
When you're talking about critters now, and snakes.
Well, we gotta find out who.
I'm pretty sure there's critters living in the house.
Property in their possession.
There's the, the, salt is tore up on one side.
Somebody owns that house.
Gables on the other side.
He doesn't own that house, right?
I'm pretty sure there's something going in there.
At Flint County, he's the owner.
Right, he might be the owner, but I'm pretty sure they got a mortgage on it, or they wouldn't move.
He's fallen.
So they, he has no, they've not been foreclosed on yet?
The bank owns it. It's in foreclosure.
Yeah, it's just not there yet, right.
Right now, with all the, because it's, wow.
I mean, our ordinance is set up to where our townspeople can go do that, but they've gotta find who's gonna pay them to do that, because.
Yeah, I don't know who's got it, which banks got it, because it's owned by them.
That's what I'd like to know.
Oh, it doesn't tell you?
It won't know until they, till the taxes start getting behind.
We just, the per acreage, she's put swingings on the property, that's all she'll do, you know, because you're not.
We ever put leans on it, if somebody cuts it, or, supposedly, somebody come out to do an estimate, didn't they, to?
Somebody's out there a while back to do a cleanup estimate, and he didn't tell me what bank he was talking to, or anything like that. Somebody said it, I'm not sure.
Now, does that barn in the back still belong to that property, or is somebody else on that?
Well, the one that was sold has been removed.
Yeah, they removed the, uh. RV carport.
Yeah, I heard that's kinda the issue, what happened, they got a loan on that house, the individuals that bought it, and it had all these big, nice buildings, very nice building, well, when they moved in, they sold one of their nice buildings, and I'm sure they didn't tell who financed it, that, that they sold that building, so now therefore, they're, whoever's got it's gonna eat that much money anyway off the selling.
Well, there's a lot more now.
Oh, exactly.
That deck is rotten.
Yeah.
And it was nice.
Really?
The inside of the house?
I've heard, I've heard it's bad.
How do we go about finding out who?
Yeah, it was nice, I haven't been inside it before.
I'll have to check with Flint County, see who's paying the taxes or stuff, sometimes I can get lucky, sometimes it takes a long time to find it.
Who do we talk to, I, I'll just go upstairs and ask them.
Well, it was like, if you, if you know, because at some point, someone starts paying the taxes on the property, usually, the bank that was trying to foreclose on it was.
Well, how long does that usually take, once they foreclose, before there's a sheriff sale?
A year.
Oh, they won't, you won't, you, you won't find a sheriff selling that house.
There's one on my, the house next to me, coming up real soon.
The, what, the seventeen?
Somebody, somebody buy it before it gets to the sheriff's sale, because there's mu, there's, there's somewhat money to be made off those properties.
Like you say, depends on where it kinda chaked or anything.
Did you read the property transfers? The house right down there?
I'll buy your house next to you, buddy, put it in a bunch, put it in a, a failure retirement home.
Anybody got anything else? Thank you, Scott. Well, we'll get to that in a minute. Police report, Marshall Riggers.
So, uh, we, we were awarded a, a, a computer and a printer and scanner from the Indiana Supreme Court Office of Judicial Administration. They're the ones who do the e-ticket, so, uh, I think coming up in September, they're, the e-ticket's gonna be available on Windows ten and above, and so, they, they ended up giving us, giving, giving us a, a laptop, and then, uh, Lewis, Louisville PD has loaned us a new laptop with a docking station, it's got a value of about three thousand dollars, and, uh, it's got CAD and e-ticket, and a VPN, which is a virtual private network, so.
That's on loan to us?
Yeah, which means that we're gonna have it until it breaks. So, uh, he got that through grant money, he's just trying to help out Greens Fork, so we got two new computers coming our way, and, uh, we'll be, we'll be up to par on our, our, our computers. I had the complaint, the white flatbed truck speeding on South Main, spoke with the driver, and he assured me that he was not speeding, I'm just saying.
So, it did, or was it going to end more?
Well, I told him that, uh, in the future, that he'd be getting a ticket, it would be actually by Darren, and Darren'd be going to court with me on it, if, if, uh, if they saw him speeding again, where it was obvious.
And what, how many complaints did we have, three, four, five?
Well, I got the one from Buddy, because.
I got it, I had it from.
Darren.
Two or three people that lived down there.
Right.
And, uh, Derringer was, uh, able to get the license number, he texted it to me, I texted immediately to you.
And then, uh, I came up there, and just sat there for him to come by, and right on, right on cue, about.
Yeah, and you hadn't been sitting there very long when he did come by.
Well, we, we knew what time, because it's the same time every time, so, and, you know, it's, it's one of them deals where he's driving for money, so, when people are driving for money, time is money, and there's one to get in a hurry, so, we all do it, I do it, we all speed, so we're all not.
Time is more money if you work by hour end.
Well, if you get paid by the Amish, the sooner you get dropped off and get home, the sooner you, you know, you're done, you're going with the life.
Did he have his guy with him?
Yeah, he had a couple Amish with him, so, which, that's not either good or bad, I'm just saying that we all speed, so you can't say, oh, I wasn't speeding, because we all speed, come on, we all do it. Uh, done, done the PC backup for Anita, got her, hers back up, it's something that, but the state's getting ready to come in and audit, so, you know, we try to make sure we back there, that thing up, so we know where their, where the money's at. Uh, backed up the PC for our PD, and we did start, uh, we had to upsize our I-drive account for the cloud backup, remember, it's been free for a long time, you know, five, five gigabytes, well, that was going away, so we had to, we had to go up to the ten, ten giga, or, I'm sorry, a hundred gigabytes, and how much was that Anita?
It was about six bucks for both computers.
Yeah, it's some, it's some low number that, that's getting billed to my, to my, my town credit card every month, so.
Every month?
Yeah, every month.
That was once a year, isn't it?
I think it's once, we can probably, I can probably call and set it up, I think we can pay it once a month, but it's, or once a year, but currently it's set up for once, once a month right now.
I'll show it to you.
Yeah, yeah, so it, but that way we can back up everything, the emails, and all the stuff, and not worry about space, we're getting up there. So, got that, had, had the dog complaint, the two white dogs, I talked to her again on that, that, that day of the white truck, I was kind of in the neighborhood, so I was right there, worked out good. She's got, um, like a big, long cable strung on her property, and then she attaches the dog to that, but she needs to get new tethers, you know, because they keep breaking, and you can see, she's got about five or six spots where they're just knotted together and tied back, these are big dogs.
These they get loose about every day.
You need a, so.
Newfoundland's, or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, I might, I might just go to the hardware store and try to find me a.
I think they're Great Peronese.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think they're big enough for you, Doug, that.
They're pretty big when they get across, I know that.
Thirty-eight that have, uh, alpacas or limousines, those are the Great Peronese, and they're twice the size of these.
So, I, I might just go buy Home Depot and get a, get a, a cable meant for that kinda stuff, because what she's using ain't working, and.
Well, I'm just wondering what's gonna happen to those dogs this winter.
Them dogs do fairly well in the wear time, I think, I think, but I'm just guessing by the fur, the amount of fur on them.
She hasn't had those dogs for six months, I think, has she, she rescued them, right?
Yeah.
My thing is, we have went over numerous times, at some point, I gotta urge you to use that ordinance, and put that ordinance into effect, and she needs to take it in. If it continues, you need to follow the ordinance that we draw it up for that perfect.
And there's a fine, is what you're saying?
Exactly, and it's all stated in the ordinance. If I remember, it took us forever to.
Yes.
Radios are being, being programmed, uh, they, uh, I gave Anita a bill for, for the, like eighty-seven bucks, but, uh, so, uh, they're getting, they had to, the guy who was doing it was doing it for free, but he had to take it to ERS in Indianapolis, because radios are having some encryption problem that he, he wasn't able to, to fix, but, so, I think ERS is, is, uh, has taken care of that, so we're just gonna reimburse that guy for that eighty-seven bucks that he spent dropping it off. And then the charger had the windows tinted, uh, hoping to avoid damage, uh, I, I think Saturday, uh, I've got a guy that's, that's gonna be looking at the, the charger to try to fix that, the inside door panel where it's separated, where it parked on the wrong, other road or something, but, uh, the guy out of Hagerstown tinted the windows, and he did a real good job, two hundred bucks, I think.
You have June for the report, it's July.
Yeah, well, you know, one of the typos.
He just copied it, because he had the windows tinted the month before, but we took him back.
It was actually last month.
Pick it up.
No, you, you took me there to pick it up, so it wasn't last month, it's a typo. And, uh, that's pretty much it, and then, and then, uh, at some point, when, you know, what we wanna figure out to do with the white cars, or whatever, that's, that's fine, I mean, uh, but no hurry right now, it's still operational, and.
I'm a way to where there's three, three board members that.
Yeah, we're, we're no hurry, so, we're good there.
And that won't be long.
Somebody have any questions for Rick? Make a motion, we accept the police report.
I'll say that motion, motion been made, properly seconded, to, uh, accept the police report, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say aze. Motion carried, thank you. Thank you, Rick. Sewer plant operations, evidently it's good, either that, or they're out there working.
No, I'm sure it's, yeah, they're not, I was just saying that, uh, the last I had spoken with her, at the last meeting, she said everything was good, I saw her, uh,
her and Doug a couple days ago, things seemed to be smooth, there was a, uh, couple beakers, I'm gonna call them beakers, but that's not what they're called, measuring devices with, uh, measurements around the side glass, that, uh, have come up missing out there, best we can figure that they possibly were stolen. So, what we need to make sure is who, anytime anybody's at that sewer plant, they need to. So, what we need to make sure is, anytime anybody's at that sewer plant, they need to ensure that the doors are locked, even if the gate is locked. The gate's got a lock on it. What everybody needs to understand, that all a lock does is keep an honest person honest. I mean, you know, if a crook wants to get in there, they can cut that lock, they can break a window, they can do whatever to get into something. But I think it needs, we need to make sure it's secure, and we will pass that on to the sewer people. Doug had, and I haven't even looked at it, but I'll bet you he texted me that he wouldn't be able to be here tonight.
Well, his truck's out there. Is he at the sewer plant, or is he in the garage?
Well, great, if they were about to see if he's in the garage, I don't-
I just looked outside. It was closed, but they were out there a second ago.
His, I know his car, Anita's right, his truck was out there.
Tell him to get in here.
I tell my Nita, say, "Get in here." Let me see if- I had called him. Sometime it's like, "Hag, you're it."
Because he's got a lock to enforce.
Yeah, we did. I know for a fact we did lose the motor on the air handling. But I don't think, how long have we had those out there? Nine years? I don't think we had to replace any motors till now.
That is a real old house, he said.
Oh, yeah. Nobody's out there.
Is his truck still there?
Uh, but, uh- Hey, Bob, you're up.
I'm up. Got, you're going to have a new house built on Water Street. Mr. Ramsey's going to build it.
Oh, in the bathroom?
Yep.
Where?
Water Street.
Yeah, but David Ramsey?
David Ramsey's lot.
For his dad?
He's going to build it in front of the building that's there now?
Yeah, somewhere in that neighborhood. Working on this guy. I gave him a call. He wasn't home. On this solar system that he's got up down there. I'm not satisfied with it. He didn't get no permits or nothing. And he's going to have to-
Was that Williams?
Yeah.
Oh, white, yeah.
He's going to have to bring that to-
Williams.
On Pearl Street.
One thirteen.
Back of their house.
Don't look for this.
I didn't know anything about that. It's new in the room there.
Yeah, it's Williams. They live there. I think they rent the place, don't they?
Oh, okay, right there across from the hand beds.
Okay, okay. I thought it was someplace else. I thought they were still talking water.
He's got them laying on the ground. Little couple pictures of other ways. He's got them laying on the ground. I don't know if he's got a converter in it, because if he don't have a converter in it, he's strictly illegal, because if the power goes out anywhere in town, and his, that system kicks on, it can backfeed and kill a lineman.
He has to have a transfer switch and all kinds of stuff.
Well, that's what you're supposed to get permits when you do things. There is a code for it.
How soon do you expect this house to be erected?
Uh, he just got the permit. They're supposed to start on it in the next month or so.
And you think it's for his dad?
No. I don't know.
That wouldn't be for his dad. I don't think. Maybe it's in-laws, because his in-laws live there with him. His dad's in a nursing home.
Yes, but I see him occasionally down there.
Been a while since he went out. I know his son that lives there was the one that's been doing the mowing.
Yes.
Normally dad, that's a dad's thing.
That sort of layout for it. Excuse me.
That base is about eight.
This big.
What's it saying? Thirty by thirty? Thirty by sixty?
Thirty, let's see, front porch is going to be thirty, no, fifteen by six on the front porch. Eleven by six, eleven by eight, eleven room seventeen by sixteen.
Should be along the side there, I think. Should be seen.
It's not. It's the outside dimensions aren't there.
What's a cat room?
What's a cats?
Cat room?
Well, it's nine hundred square feet of what's happening.
And is that Ashley for cats? Cat room?
I don't know. I'm just going by what he's got in these plans.
Maybe it's cat room.
I'm just going by what he's got in these plans. About nine hundred square feet, he says.
But he's going to put there some-
She ran out of square feet, so I think it's a lot more than-
That's thirty.
I think it's thirty by thirty.
Did you say it was four?
Yeah, that's thirty wide, and it does really look almost square.
Yeah, it's almost square.
If you take the porch off.
Cats have a nice place.
Yes, they will.
Other than that, everything's going all right.
Did you have, do you have a phone number for Mr. Williams?
Yep, called him, but he wasn't at home. I left a message on his machine.
You want his address?
I got his address.
Kevin Williams, is that?
In the girls? In his man, girl?
No.
No.
Is Kevin the boy?
No, wait a minute, yeah.
Now, who's the dad?
Uh, I think, I thought Kevin was the dad. Kevin used to be a police officer, didn't he, Rick? What, Neil, who? Kevin Williams with my little house right on the alley, if you will, across from the hand beds.
He is back along the-
He was down Marston, I don't know, back in the nineties, wasn't he?
I bet so.
Back along Lane on Sugar Grove, and that's a Williams. Kathy is her name.
I don't know who lives there now, but I just thought, talking to one tenant.
Sugar Grove.
I think it's a-
Candy pack?
I think it's a-
Well, I'm not talking there. I'm talking-
Small town?
South.
Oh, part-time, yeah. Oh, yeah.
All in the small town, even Indianapolis started out with down Marston.
Yes, Kevin is.
Earl Kitten.
Yes.
Earl's son.
But I didn't know that-
Kevin's son. It would be Earl's grandson.
I didn't know that Kevin was back in town. I thought he was still-
Was she Askins or something like that? She's the lady that we had that made her give her the chickens.
Yeah, Askett.
And I hated that. Okay.
About all I have on that.
Question, I meant to ask you one in a minute. Do you check on that property over here? Does it have the billing permit for ever?
No, I haven't stopped by there yet.
I don't know that you're going to catch it. It's very hard to catch somebody yet. I think Nita has a number. They're out of town anyway. She may have a number.
Has she got a daughter or something?
She got a daughter. They're there for a while, but I don't know what-
Because I think I run into her, and I knew who she was, but-
I can't remember what her name was.
As many people that I meet every day, I can't remember.
Anybody got any questions for Bob, the building commissioner?
Make a motion to accept the building commissioners' report.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Motion's been made, properly seconded. To accept Bob's report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Officer Carey, thanks, Bob. Well, guess who's up now? Rubber. Sewer utility monthly income indiscretions.
Well, in July, we did take in fourteen thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars, but we spent nineteen thousand. Doesn't sound good, does it? And we have spent more this year than we've taken in. I hope that changes pretty soon.
Well, normally, every year, we spend a lot more than we take in somehow.
Sometimes they have to have help, yeah. Now, the people then, most people don't realize what it costs to get rid of the poo. Anyway, July the first, we had twenty accounts that was entered ninety days, and we collected on sixteen of those, and the clerk only had to do four new sewer lanes. At present time, we got twenty-eight outstanding sewer lanes that's due to be paid through the Wayne County Treasurers Department. Also, the clerk released twelve sewer lanes in July that were paid in full. And there was two that was paid on parcels, but there was twelve that was paid in full. Still, right now, we got twenty-eight outstanding ones, which is probably a low number. We could have had over a hundred. So, we feel pretty fortunate right now. They are time consuming. But we have spent more than we've taken in, but that's pretty typical on the sewer. Sometimes it has to have help from other fronts. We got overdue sewer, and we've got overdue trash. At least we're able to pay all the bills out there right now.
You ever get any money from the collection agency on that trash?
Very little, very, very little, very little.
That's a good thing, because it costs us everything.
Yeah, it really wasn't worth it. We may do that again sometime. I don't know.
Well, you're still on the books over there.
Oh, yeah, 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 they say it, yeah. But a lot of this nineteen hundred ninety-one dollars on the trash is people who are all bankrupts and stuff, you know. And we're not going to probably get anything on that. But what we, what is charged to each customer in town is not enough to cover the rumpie bill every month. The town has to add to it.
What do we eat? How much? Four dollars per unit?
No, two. Ten. We're charging ten dollars per.
And what are we, thirteen?
Twelve fifty, isn't it?
I'm sorry, what?
What is the monthly rate from rumpie now?
Twenty, twenty-one hundred sixty-six dollars.
No, no, per household, thirteen something?
Uh, that sounds about right.
I was thinking it was twelve fifty, but it didn't make any sense.
And of course, how soon are we up for renewal on that?
Well, we did a five-year contract last time, remember? It should be good for a year or two.
But Greens Fork pays rumpie twenty-one hundred sixty-six dollars a month to come through here once a week to pick it all up.
That's over and above what we're charging the customers.
Well, we don't take in enough to pay that, but we take in some. Years ago, the town paid for the whole thing, and they decided, council did, that we needed to charge them something. If you live outside of city limits and you have rumpie, you're going to pay a hundred dollars for three months.
It's twelve forty-five per minute.
Pardon me?
Twelve dollars forty-five cents per.
I didn't hear you.
Twelve dollars forty-five cents per.
Twelve thirty-five.
Forty-five. I was closer. It was fifty. I win.
Yeah. Perfect household.
You went over, though.
Yeah.
Well, that's all I got, guys.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept Nita's report.
I second it.
Motion's been made, properly seconded. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aye. Thank you, Nita. Street report. I've got the thing here. Normal stuff, mowing. Actually, I got a call the other day before I was going to work. Rick Shepard, coming north on Main Street on the west side. There was a big bush there that was completely blocking the railroad crossing lights. So, he asked me, "Is that our responsibility as a town, or is that the person that has the property?" I said, "If it's a safety issue, it's our responsibility. Knock on the door, tell them what you're going to do. Ask them if they want to do it, or they don't. Just let them know you're going to do it if they don't do it. Ask them if it's okay." And he evidently did, because it has been cleaned out there, so you can see the railroad crossing now, so that's good. And working on the slump out here, slope out here, slump, slope. Been cutting a lot of limbs around town. Rick is good about that, because his son's a school bus driver, and his son will tell him, "Well, there's trees hanging over here and trees hanging over there," so he tries to make a point to, which is good, to trim them out, so that's a good thing. That combined their, Rick has combined it with sewer tasks sheet and street. Of course, he's been doing lift station checks. Cut limbs, lift station checks, cut limbs, lift station checks, move a lot.
Lawnmower has flat tire, three trips to town for that.
Excuse me?
Lawnmower had a flat tire, three trips to town for that.
Oh.
According to Wayne.
That should be under warranty, if I'm correct.
Well, Wayne, oh, yeah, we needed to, yeah. But they put an energy in the old car that still had something in it, a bunch of it, energy, so they're laying on.
I got you. I see. I'll make a motion to accept the street. I don't want to call it a record street explanation.
I second it.
Motion's been made, properly seconded. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aye.
I've got a question.
Thank you.
The property up on the end of North Main. Does he have a time period that we are going to allow him to clean that yard up?
Which one are you talking about?
The one Lawson's down. He is doing some construction on the house, I believe, isn't he?
Is he tarred on the roof?
I haven't been down there for ever.
Lawrence owns it. He was selling it on contract, but I think that fell through, throughout the street.
Well.
But it's got, oh, two semi trucks, four in the yard.
Well, we probably need to get a letter out to him saying, "Hey."
You want me to just call him? I think he will take care of it.
Well, call him if you don't. He'll send you a letter next month. Fair, right?
And can you quote on yard debris? What's the?
You want the ordinance for that?
Yes.
Talking about debris?
I'm talking about-
Junk.
Well, not necessarily junk, wood, tree limbs.
Wheat.
I cannot remember.
I can't believe either.
The ordinance is right there.
Well, I got to look. I can-
But you are talking about-
High tech, right?
His yard food and stuff. I haven't been up there. I haven't seen it.
Unbelievable. I can't believe what she left and walked away. But he's got all the windows open and no screens in that house, so I'd hate to guess what's coming in now.
Well, probably anything that hasn't already lived there anyway. We had one of our town guys went in there one time, and there was a snake in the overhead light.
Wow.
Called that a ceiling.
The light fixture.
What is that?
Went to sleep.
One one seven North Main.
School.
So, hopefully, whoever's got that will get that straightened up. I'd like to see them tear that barn down or do something with it. I mean, it can be a nice piece of property. It really could be.
But the house is destroyed. Just level it. Tarps everywhere.
Yeah, people used to ask why we didn't take it down with the light, and I said, "Somebody lives in it. You can't do that."
Yeah, that's awful.
So, are you opposed to me calling him, and I just call him?
Well-
Had complaints on it. Wouldn't please clean up the yard?
And there is a pickup truck up there, so I'm assuming he is working on it.
Yeah, he's-
He's probably been overwhelmed with what he ran into.
Well, I'm sure. Well, that just goes to show you that if you're going to, don't buy something like that unseen.
He didn't even know what was inside of it. I mean, I can't believe you buy a house that's shady and shiny.
Well, it's all over TV about flipping this and flipping that. I think a lot of people just get hooked up into that house flipping stuff, and good for them. I'm too old, too lazy, and not smart enough to do that.
I've looked and done it years ago, but- I've done it years ago, but not now.
Rick's looking that up.
Yep. We can move on, you'll come tell us.
Okay, unfinished business is Storm Green and Maple Street. I did see something somewhere, let me find it. Said that Wayne is ready to pour the frame for the collection box on Maple Street, Storm Green. So hopefully that will be happening momentarily. We put that on hold for a couple of years, but I mean, it's not become an issue since either, I don't think, but the people that are up there know it's there, which is a good thing. Autistic street signs for East Pearl Street, I don't, has anybody noticed they were up? Moon was up, and I think it was waiting on the breakaway post, which has come in since.
Yeah, she's come in.
So our coordinator was here, he could tell us.
Yeah, I wish he was here, he's avoiding us, I think.
He probably, probably taking a while to do a break. Okay, new business. First thing we need to talk about is we Rick Stewart, who was our street commissioner, resigned. There is a position open. We do have one, one person that's interested in taking it. Anybody that knows anybody that may be interested can get with us. Scott has thrown his hat into the ring. Kinda need to get new people, so that the people that's been on the board can train the new people, and kinda have a rotation where you rotate out and get young people. We need, we need young ideals sometime, and we still need the older people, like not older people, like Kathy and I, and Bob, that know what you can't do and what you can do. You know, when I first came on this board, I was like, well, that ain't right, we're not gonna do that anymore. Well, yes, you are, cause the state makes you do that. You know, there's nothing you can do about it. What you got there, Kathy?
General, uh, and rubbish streets, privies, conditions. Property shall be kept free from garbage, waste materials, rubbish, and unwholesome, excuse me. Food waste. Junk.
Is it, it was written somewhere, I remember reading, something that was intended for a certain use, if it's no longer good for that use, it's gotta go.
Garbage, waste materials, rubbish, refuge.
I mean, at some point, you're probably gonna have to have that thing condemned and forced to hand it owner. Well, I don't see anyone putting money, that kind of money into it, but they might.
He's planning on putting it.
Well, they can plan all they want, but whether it happens or not, different story.
And in years past, we have looked into that. I've even asked Bob at one time, if you remember years ago, said, somebody said something about condemning it, he said, you can't just knock on somebody's door and say, move out, we're condemning your home. And you can't.
No, it takes quite a thing.
Yeah, it's quite a process to do that.
And it's adults living there, it's harder.
Exactly, exactly, and if I'm not mistaken, if I'm, if there, let's just say there's an adult person that lives in a home, that person does not have to have toilet, does not have to have running water, does not have to have anything, power, nothing. They don't have to have it. Is that correct?
Unless you're.
But the building has to be safe. They can't, they can't just have walls falling down, falling in, the ceiling falling in.
Well, if you, how do you know they're falling in? What are you doing in somebody's house?
You can't, you can see it from the outside. It just takes community standards and someone willing to go after it, I guess.
How does that work, Bob? What's the process for something like that?
You just gotta start it, and just keep working, working, working. It is a hard thing to do, to condemn a house.
I remember us having this discussion about ten years ago. Been here too long.
Unless you, if you don't have a I forget what they call it, a certain person to do that, and everything, and stay right with it. You know, it's, it's very hard.
I know what you're saying, and what is the hardest thing to understand here is that this whole town is a part-time entity. We have no full-time employees, we don't have the budget for full-time employees, so it's kind of it's kind of hard, you can't have somebody, okay, you're in charge of condemned housing, you're in charge of, you know what I mean, you just can't do that. Everybody's gotta pitch in, do the best they can, and hopefully it works out, and has it worked out? I think it has, I mean, we're still here, state hasn't taken us over yet.
We've got a good crew.
And that's, that's something else that I like to, every now and then bring up, just to put in the back of everybody's mind. The state is the one that insisted, no, they didn't insist, they made us put in the sewer. They are also, not the state, but rural development is also, the last time that there was a sewer rate increase, wasn't our ideal, it was the rural development who has guaranteed the loan, if you will, says, you know, we, cause they keep an eye on that stuff. It's getting tight, you have to raise the rates. Well, then there's a whole lot more to that. To raise the rates on something, you have to hire an entity of a, to come in and say what you're supposed to raise it to, and ten years ago, was it ten years ago we raised the rates? Seven, eight, ten, something like that?
Well, seven or eight years, I believe.
It costs us thirty-five hundred dollars for somebody to tell us to raise it to what we had already decided we thought we should raise it, before we knew we had to have a rate consultant tell us that.
And then we have to pay the rate consultant.
Yeah, and if I'm not mistaken, the last time we did that, the three dollars, that we, we went three dollars over three years, three this year, three this, and it took us over a year to pay back the thirty-five hundred out of the rates, so we made it, so, you know, it's.
But it's coming, it's.
Oh, it's coming, oh, yeah. And right now, with the way inflation, and I hate it, and that's all you hear, well, it's inflation, it's inflation.
Yeah, we had a problem with the sewers just the other day, and the all industry come out, we got a bill for eight hundred and ten dollars. They come out and done just a little bit of work. It's unreal.
Well, that's.
Growth of certain vegetation restricted. It doesn't specifically say tree limbs. Any property owner who fails to remove weeds, grass, dent, detrimental plants, or other rank vegetations shall be deemed in violation, so I just wondered, I could not remember.
What, how does the state, you go about one, you send them a letter, ten days later? It's, I know how the ordinances are broken down.
Well, you know, it works just like your sewer liens and everything.
Yes, but I wanted an answer.
Put it on, put it on, put it on, and if it don't get paid, it ain't gonna get done.
Right. Right.
The clerk treasurer shall cause the cutting removal of such to be done if the person failed you to do it. Clerk treasurer shall have a statement delivered to the property owner to see what it costs to have it cleaned up.
And I think we have all our ordinance read that the town marshal can't deliver all ordinances or all correspondence that we have.
So the actual cost, the cutting and removal of the vegetation, together with a twenty-five dollar administration fee.
Does it say how long they've got once they receive a letter that they need to clean up? Just give them a ten-day or thirty-day?
Ten days.
If they don't pay, then it goes into a weedling.
Yeah, ten days.
Part of it goes into a weedling, not everything.
Part of it, yeah, yeah, you're right. We haven't had one of those in a long time, we had some a long time ago, didn't we?
Yeah, back there on.
I've been keeping ties with you.
Thank you. He's gotten a lot, rid of a lot of stuff, but it's still pretty.
Oh, he's still, yeah.
Junky.
We need to, if I'm not mistaken, Bath Bank owns that, we need to get ahold of them, they need to clean that driveway.
Bath Bank?
I believe it's Bath, or Bad. It was on GIS, I think he's got it. But, yeah. Anybody have any other questions about anything? Janice, you got anything about anything? Everybody know Janice. Ah, didn't any, this is Janice.
Yeah, she was clerk treasurer at Centerville for a hundred years.
Ninety-five.
Oh, just ninety-five.
But she is kind enough that she's come and lent her expertise to us on a lot of things, and it's been great.
Well, I do have something. You will introduce the budget next month. I'm working on it with Wayne, so we'll introduce it, and then October, you will approve it.
Right.
So I need both of you here.
We'll have folks, if I don't have a free people there, actually.
Okay.
Hey, Janice, go ahead and throw yourself in the race on that.
Take a ride out with police, bud. They get free stuff in wrong grants, so they don't need their money.
You're gonna do that, go ahead and throw mine in there, too.
She does four reports for us. She's our second center of eyes, I think, state board reports.
I think we're ready for approval of warrants.
There you go.
Brenda, you have anything? You was back here hiding.
We didn't have any chemical pill this month, from Hawkins. So we'll have two next month. Yeah, cause we are in season for chemicals.
We're doing ACOY April through November, I believe. They did tell you the air hammer motor is down, right?
Didn't we just fix that air handle?
It wasn't the motor, it, they did something, but the motor, at first, they thought it may have been after the storm, a lightning strike, no, it wasn't, the motor just burned up, and. Yeah, I don't, yeah, they redid them, and there's been a lot done out there since the onset, you know, I hate to keep beating up the state, but they allowed the engineer, the engineering firm allowed the company that put the system in to go with the absolute lowest specifications of anything, and it, over, that's been eighteen years ago, and as a perfect example, we were granted a million dollars, and we borrowed a million dollars, and on the million dollars, two loans, five hundred thousand that we borrowed, and I think we still owe we pay fifty-one thousand four hundred dollars a year on those notes, and we still owe about
Seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand dollars on that million dollar loan.
More goes.
Now we're gonna be able to trade it in.
Yeah, no trade-in value whatsoever. I keep, every time I go out there, for those of you that's never been out there, it's a big cement tanks, and there's like cracks in it, and it looks like sea beach in it, so can we ride or not? You know, why not try?
Why these days? You never know when the fun's gonna go out.
I'm making warrants, we accept the warrants. You haven't seen, so do you wanna look at it?
Haven't seen this one yet, yeah.
You want any of the paper, I'll sign it.
Not yet.
He hasn't read them yet.
She wanted me to make sure I read them.
Oh, okay.
Keeping me straight.
Which one are you looking at?
Duke Energy.
Yep.
Two tonight, that is what the other one was, they're charging us a fee.
How much was that fee on that one pump station?
Forty-five.
God, is it seven, you were forty-two?
Forty. It was, I said it was forty-five.
Our bill is usually forty-five-ish on it.
Oh, you say charges another fee, so now we've got double.
No, if you make it. Motion been made to accept the warrants, I second it. Motion been made properly seconded, accept the warrants, all in favor say aye. All opposed say the same.
Yeah, people have no clue when it comes to flushing their toilet, what goes into all that.
They just know what comes out.
Yeah, they have no clue what it costs to get rid of it. It's enormous. I didn't look it up, eight, ten. We just like to have people that work cheap for the town, can never make it.
Have a row around farmer, just put in a new finger system. Oh, yeah.
What'd that cost?
I don't know, but I know, but then, then right after, they look up the sewer.
Oh, well, that happened to me, too.
Yeah.
Mom knows what that cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Close to ten thousand dollars.
Think they, what it would cost now with inflation.
Yeah, it was eight, I spent eight, and then I spent another over two thousand, and it filled the town. I had just got through looking up, because Wayne County made us do it. Warrants?
Yeah, that's about, maybe eight, ten, somebody fee, you gotta hook up.
Whole day, China. It happens.
All right, does anybody have anything they'd like to bring forth to council before we adjourn the meeting? Nita, you got anything before we adjourn?
I don't think so.
Brenda? Hi there.
Do I have anything?
Yes, ma'am. Anybody got anything? Janice, Kathy?
Nope.
I'm making motion when adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
Motion been made, property sectioned, adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you everybody for coming.